Welcome, everyone. Good evening. I'm calling the September 17th regular City Council meeting to order. I'd like to ask those who would like to join the council, myself, and the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
(inaudible)
Under Special Business on our agenda this evening, we have a couple of proclamations that I will come down and deliver. I'd first like to invite Eastside Baby Corner Board Member Andy Simons to join me at the lectern to receive the proclamation. This is for diaper need awareness week. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas there are no government assistance programs for the purchase or provision of diapers, and a monthly supply of diapers can cost as much as 6% of a full-time minimum wage worker's salary, therefore obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families. And whereas the people of Issaquah recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities, now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the week of September 24th to 30th, 2018, to be diaper need awareness week in the City of Issaquah, and strongly urge all citizens to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate diaper need in Issaquah and environs. Thanks. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you. I'm here on behalf of Eastside Baby Corner, and that's an Issaquah organization. It's a little gem that we have right here in our own community. It serves our partners, we serve about 50 partners throughout the east side, including Friends of Youth and Issaquah Clothing Bank, and we make many things available to families in need, not just diapers, but car seats, formula, and many items of clothing. And of course, clothing, toys, things like this can be recycled, donated throughout the community. Diapers and formula, of course, cannot. And so, Eastside Baby Corner raises funds in order to be able to provide that as well. And so, what is the purpose of diaper need awareness week? It's to raise the awareness of everyone of this need and inspire people to take part. Whether you contribute to a diaper drive or contribute to an organization like Eastside Baby Corner, you're doing a great service. As we know, it's a necessity, and so we thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks. So I'm just going to stay down at the microphone for our next proclamation, and I'd like to invite Eastside Refugee and Immigrant Coalition Executive Director Debbie Lacy to the lectern. Hey, Debbie, nice to see you. Whereas the population on the east side continues to grow rapidly, increasing by over 80,000 residents in the last five years, and whereas over 40% of these newcomers have arrived from places outside the United States, and whereas more than one-third of east side residents now speak a language other than English at home, and whereas diversity is the lifeblood of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, innovation and entrepreneurial spirit, leadership, and hard workers, and whereas our success depends on ensuring that all our residents feel welcome here, now therefore we, the Mayors of Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Sammamish, Washington, proclaim September 14th through 23rd, 2018, as Eastside Welcoming Week in our cities, and call on all our residents to join together to build a stronger community across the east side. And would you like to address the audience this evening?
Thank you so much, Mayor Polly. Councilmembers, appreciate it so much. So ERIC coordinates Eastside Refugee and Immigrant Coalition, coordinates the National Welcoming Week every year throughout the east side, and this year there are over 25 events being sponsored and hosted by multiple organizations and cities. So we're very excited about this event happening right now through the 23rd. And the week is more than just a celebration. It's the culmination of year-round work that our coalition does with Issaquah and other cities across the east side. We have this partnership that goes way back to 2002 when we first started our coalition. And welcoming goes beyond community events. It goes beyond the neighbor-to-neighbor friendliness that we hope we have in our communities. It's really, in our view, about institutionalizing welcoming, coming down to the policies and the practices and the programs that our communities support to help all residents feel welcome and included. So sometimes along with the cultural richness that diversity brings, there can be some division, some tension in communities, and we've seen that. Longtime residents can feel a disconnect, not being able to communicate with their neighbors who speak different languages. New immigrants can feel that same disconnect for different reasons, feeling isolated, unsure how to connect with their local governments and community members. So cities that come together like Issaquah and promote welcoming in various ways that you do really help to bring those people together and bridge some of those gaps. So there are several Issaquah-sponsored events on the Welcoming Week calendar. You have, I believe, flyers in your packets, and I believe, Mayor Polly, that you'll be coming to, are you going to do the Wrangellie Art, Community Art Project on Thursday to Wednesday, Issaquah Library, 4:00? So that would be a great way to connect, and there are lots of other opportunities, too. So we hope you'll take the opportunity, councilmembers and community members as well, to please join in an event and help celebrate Welcoming Week with us. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is audience, is audience comments, and this is the time for any of those in the audience that would like to address council. This is your time. Guidelines for public participation will be displayed on the overhead screen, and there is a sign-up list out there. If you have signed up, we'll call you forward first, and if you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. If you are here as part of a group, please identify yourself as a spokesperson for a group, and if you're here supporting someone speaking tonight, please let your council know by raising your hand when you're in agreement with the speaker's comments. You can also raise your hand at any time if you're here for one issue and hearing another speaker speak, and you want to support what they're saying. There's also a public hearing tonight. AB 7605 is the 2018 First Budget Amendment, and you will have, if you'd like to make comments on this topic, you will have opportunity later in the meeting. Audience comments are for up to five minutes, and has anybody signed up to speak this evening?
No.
Would anybody like to address the council this evening? Mr. Kapler.
Thank you, David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Just quickly, it seems like the requests to the state are all legitimate highest priorities, but the state has done some great things for Lake Sammamish State Park and open space and parks in our area, and I would think that is something that should be a higher priority than as I see it on the Agenda Bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address council this evening? Right ahead. Come on up. Your name and address before your address. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jerry Potter, and I live at 26020 Southeast Old Black Nugget Road in Issaquah. And I'm here as a spokesperson for Save Cougar Mountain. And I just wanted to say we manned a table for the art and wine night, and it went very well. We got 100 signatures, and it seems like we got more signatures as the evening went on, as people were enjoying themselves. It was great. The weather was great, and people seemed very enthusiastic and very excited about signing, being able to sign up, and they're concerned about what could happen to the mountain. And so, it was a very, I think it was a very successful event, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Jerry. Would anyone else like to address council this evening? Seeing no other hands, that is a really short audience comment session. Thank you to the two speakers who came to talk about open space and Save Cougar Mountain. Actually, I need to do one more call. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close this part of the session. Committee and regional reports. We will start with Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board met on September 13th, 2018, at the Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters. I was a substitute, and my fellow councilmember Stacy Goodman also was present. We talked about PFOS. They are currently testing for PFOS, and the data will be presented later in the year with a final report that will come forward in January of 2019. We got an update about a change to their training program. They are going to be working with East Metro Training Group, or they're moving from East Metro Training Group to the South King County Fire Training Consortium. And the reason for this will be to increase efficiencies and training opportunities and ultimately decrease costs. There were some questions from the board members, and so it was decided that the board would get more information at a later briefing and a presentation about how this training consortium works. We got an update about wildland fires in Washington State and also in California and Oregon, and about the efforts that the Eastside Fire and Rescue had in addressing those many wildfires that were experienced this year. And then, we also heard an update about proposed, a proposed update to the NOX BOX program. This is a program where the firefighters have non-destructive access to buildings to, so that they can access buildings without having to break in if there is a fire issue. And so, that was recommended, that it would be discussed in detail at the, by the Financial Advisory Committee. And lastly, we heard a update from their 2014 to 2015 financial audit. The financial audit was clean. There was one finding, and it sounded to me like it was not substantive. It was more of a technical issue, but the emphasis was that the audit was clean. And the next meeting of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board will be October 11th at 4:00 PM. And I have one more committee report. Cascade Water Alliance Resource Management Committee met on September 13th as well at the Cascade Office in Bellevue. The first topic that we talked about was reclaimed water. This is something that's a very hot topic right now. We heard a presentation from a study that was prepared by HDR. That's the same group that the city worked with on their water system plan. The study explored opportunities within Cascade's service area for how to best use reclaimed water, what the cost would be, what the use cases could be, and what the trade-offs would be. So we heard the presentation. There was a discussion about the potential effects on ratepayers. That remains a major concern of Cascade in terms of use of reclaimed water. And also, I always try to remember to define reclaimed water. So reclaimed water is wastewater that has been treated and is suitable for other uses, such as agriculture or irrigation. And we also talked about the Cascade's water system plan. They are going to be doing an extension of their current plan. And then lastly, we talked about water quality management work plan. This is a work plan for, a work plan to monitor the water quality in Lake Tops, which is the reservoir, and also to study things that are important to the health of the reservoir, such as identification of stormwater sources. The next meeting of Cascade Water Alliance Resource Management Committee will be October 11th at the Cascade Office in Bellevue. That completes my report.
Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The Services and Safety Committee met on September 11th at 6:30. The agenda included Agenda Bill 7654, Puget Sound Energy Green Direct II Agreement, which is on tonight's regular business. Agenda Bill 7631, Visit Issaquah Bylaws, which will be on regular business on October 1st. Agenda Bill 7605, 2018 First Budget Amendment, which we are having a public hearing on this evening. Agenda Bill 7658, Amendments to the Medical Plan for the City for 2019. An Agenda Bill 7664, Amendments to IMC 5.O2 Business Licenses. The Services and Safety Committee will have a special meeting tomorrow, September 18th, at 6:30 PM here in council chambers. The agenda will include Agenda Bill 7640, Amending School Impact Fees. Agenda Bill 7655, Expedited Traffic Enforcement Pilot Project Summary Report and Extension. And additionally, the committee will be receiving a presentation entitled "City Gives" that describes the various ways the city supports nonprofits in our community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. This Thursday, the 20th, we'll have the Council Infrastructure Committee meeting here in council chambers at 6:30. Items on the agenda, two action items, one, AB 7646, the amendments to our sewer rates we're looking at, and the other one, AB 7339, the Holiday Inn lift stations for sewage, we'll be looking at that as well. Two other items for information are updates on the Providence Point Signal Intersection and Newport Way retaining walls, Newport Way Northwest, excuse me, retaining walls. So that'll be then. On the 7th, I attended the Washington State Public Works Board meeting that, on our legislative agenda, is a thing to help encourage the legislature to continue to fund the Public Works account, which is good. So we're preparing for that, as well as going out for pre-construction loans. And just a reminder, that's a funding source for municipalities and other utility service districts to get very inexpensive loans to allow them to build and construct and maintain their infrastructure at a much lower cost. So that's a very important thing to the whole state. On the 14th, on this Friday, I was at the Eastside Transportation Partnership. One of the main items there talked about was how electric bikes are coming and how their changes may be coming to our transportation system and how we look at bike lanes or car lanes or whatever. Electric bikes, you know, the ones they have now can do up to 30 miles an hour, some of them, so it's not quite, you know, it's a little different whether they mix with people on a multi-use trail and those kinds of issues. So we're working on issues on that and looking at how other areas of the country have dealt with them as well. So electric bikes are probably coming. We've got to look at them a little closer. And then the last thing is this Wednesday, on the 19th, I will be attending the Regional Transit Committee meeting, King County, in Seattle at the courthouse. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you, and I got to say, I love electric bikes. The best thing about them, they go up hills.
Yeah, you do.
The best thing about them. I have four reports to give this evening, including for Land and Shore, which I don't normally do. But I'll start with the Growth Management Policy Board. We met Thursday, September 6th, at PSRC Headquarters in Seattle, and as been in the last few months and will be through all of this year, most of next year, and into early 2020, the main topic at GMPB is the Update to Vision, currently called Vision 2040. The update will be called Vision 2050. And in this past meeting, we had conversations, and this is really all that's happening at this point. The PSRC staff is actually doing quite a bit of work, presenting us with lots of data and lots of ways to talk about things, but there's no, we're getting to some decisions about something soon. But we had conversations about the objectives of Vision, about outcomes, and we're going to continue to talk about objectives and outcomes as well. We have lots of conversation about the regional growth strategy, so that is, that's in Vision. That's what identifies things called regional growth centers. It's the foundation for all of that, and it is very, it's pretty important. And certain components of that we discussed at length, the concept of regional geographies. So that's the idea of major metropolitan cities, large cities, small cities, and unincorporated areas that have high-capacity transit. So it's breaking down the region into these various geographies to define their nature and to identify kind of actual and potential growth patterns. We talked quite a bit about growth scenarios because there will be an EIS that's done as part of this Vision update, and that's one of the near-term decisions that has to be made by the board on what scenarios are going to be included in the environmental impact statement work that's done. We had conversations about TOD goals, or Transit Oriented Development Goals, and I want to share, I noticed a shift that's happening. The question about, do you set land use and plan your transportation around it, or do you plan your transportation and modify your land use to take advantage of that transportation plan, seems to be drifting in the direction of, there's quite a bit of long-range transportation planning that's been done with light rail and stations everywhere. Let's modify land use around those to take maximum advantage of the region's transportation infrastructure that's going to get built. And so, there was, there was quite a bit of conversation about that, and I see that moving in that direction. We had conversations about the job-housing balance. Now, that's a very complex topic, and it's a lot more complex than just a few numbers on a piece of paper. And so, these are conversations at this time, but I think those growth scenarios will be ones that we'll be able to report back more sooner than others because there'll be decisions to affect the EIS. That was GMPB. The next I'll talk about is the Land and Shore Committee meeting. I was able to, I served, I chaired that meeting on September 6th. Stacy was absent, so at her request, I chaired it, and Councilmember Ray joined us as well. So we had all three. We had two major issues on the agenda. First was the Old Town Subarea Plan. This is an issue that has been in front of the council, or at least the committee, the Land and Shore quite a few times, I think going back maybe, certainly well over a year, maybe a year and a half. And it's been, there has been public engagement. There has been numerous meetings at PPC, and it's been, I think those have been very robust, have been very good. I think it's gotten better and better over time, and the, I think the plan today is like 12 pages long, and I found it succinct and to the point. So we had a, this was the first of two scheduled conversations in front of Land and Shore. So the purpose of this meeting was to have, to go through, we went through every piece of the plan at its state right now, and we asked a number of questions of staff. Staff had a lot of answers. They took, they took away some action items, and then the plan is for that to come back with responses for Land and Shore at the next meeting in October, where possibly that committee will take action on it then. The other item on the agenda for, for that Land and Shore meeting was discussion about proposed land use changes to the central area, which is Agenda Bill 7661. Again, that was a discussion to understand what was proposed, to ask questions. Staff again, you know, took, recorded those questions, and will be coming back again to the October meeting. So there was no action plan for that matter, and that will be coming back to Land and Shore again at the October meeting. And I'll put a plug in right now that I will not be able to attend the October meeting, so if anybody wants to let me know if they can sub for me, please let me know. The next report is about the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, or LTAC. We met on Friday, the 13th, I think that's when it was, last Friday, at Homewood Suites. We have four items on the agenda. We got an update on the destination marketing organization known as Visit Issaquah. Their bylaws were in front of Services and Safety earlier. Remember, we appointed a Board Selection Committee? That committee has been hard at work. They currently have a board of nine members. They received over 20 applications for other board positions. They are still reviewing further applications. That group has reviewed those bylaws, and that, the current board has accepted the bylaws in the form that came in front of Land and Shore. They also have come up with a job description for the executive director for that. They have not posted it because they want this kind of bylaws process to go through our council process, and maybe a little bit more about budget as well, because they also did come up with their proposed budget for 2019. And that's an item that's going to come back in front of this council as part of our own 2019 budget deliberations as well. So they have not posted that executive director position. They want a couple of those gates to be, to go through, such as the bylaws through the council and some conversation about budget before they post that position. We got an update on the AVP, the American Volleyball Professionals Tournament. It's been held at Lake Sammamish State Park the last three years. They want to hold it again next year at 2019, and the AVP organization is in conversations with similar bodies around the world associated with beach volleyball, and they're, they're trying to make a decision whether or not to make the 2019 tournament an Olympic qualifying event for the 2020 Tokyo Olympics. And if they did in 2019, the 2020 tournament would be an Olympic qualifier as well. So that would significantly ratchet up the size, the global attention, but also there would be international teams, would be travelers from internationally. I imagine that that could probably double the amount of attendees that we've got in recent years to that tournament. So there's a lot of stakeholders involved. Obviously, state parks is highly involved. The Seattle Sports Commission has an interest in this. Obviously, some of us think the DMO should have an interest, but it's kind of early for the DMO yet, and, and so that was, that was interesting to hear, and I do not know if they have made a decision whether or not to make this an Olympic qualifying event. The third item we discussed was city branding and wayfinding, and the idea is to create a kind of a citywide comprehensive wayfinding system. We had a presentation from Jennifer Fink and a member, consultants from the executive office about that, and they, I've learned that they're coming forward, and likely in the 2019 budget, there will be proposals for us council to consider for funding for branding and wayfinding study effort. And later on, I'll mention, because our last item is, the LTAC talked about a budget, and the LTAC, they did an ask of LTAC as well for some LTAC funds for branding and wayfinding. And that was the last item on our agenda, where we put together our, our proposed use of LTAC funds for 2019, which have been submitted to the administration. It's going to be part of the budget coming forward. So this, this year, you'll get an LTAC budget that actually came from the LTAC committee. We finally got that in in time. So we're asking for money for the DMO, where you'll see money in there for branding and wayfinding, and also for the AVP tournament. So that was our conversation at LTAC. And then the last thing I have to report on is this past Saturday, I was one of a dozen electeds that attended a workshop put on, hosted by the Ruckles House Center, and it's an issue regard, they have been charged by the Washington State Legislature to take, to convene and collaboratively talk with people around the state about the state's growth management framework. All of us on the council, you've seen emails had come in. It's even mentioned in our regional agenda about participating and tracking the work that's being done by the Ruckles House Center. So I had an opportunity, I went this Saturday, and there's another, they're going to meet here in Issaquah later this month. I'm going to be out of town, so that's why I didn't attend that one. But the, the purpose for these meetings, I'm just going to read something really quick, is the purpose of, they're calling this Washington Roadmap. "The Purpose of the Roadmap to Washington's Future Project is to articulate a vision of Washington's desired future and identity, and, excuse me, and identify additions, revisions, or clarifications to the growth management framework of state laws, institutions, and policies needed to reach that future." GMA is just one part of our framework, but there's also, SEPA is part of that. Special Purpose Districts are part of that. There are, there are over 20 different state laws, and as they said, other institutions and policies that make up this framework. And this is a multi-year effort, which does not assume that we're just going to change what's in place. It's actually that, it's just a wide-open opportunity to talk to stakeholders around the state. And this was very good because this was, my meeting was all with other electeds here in, most of them were from East King County, so they're representative, there were two state legislators that were there. There were representatives from Shoreline, Kirkland, Bellevue, Redmond, and a couple Special Purpose Districts as well. special-purpose districts as well, water and sewer districts. And we talked about what would be the, so these same, if you go, it'll be the same type of meeting. They'll want to hear what you think about, what you think the purpose and value of the growth management framework, what is that? They want to hear about the current state, what we think is working and what is not, about the future state, what are our citizens saying, what may need to be added, what major issues need to be addressed within this framework? And we had quite a bit of a robust conversation about public engagement as well. One last point I'll make about this. In the 2015 legislature, there were 75 bills related to growth management, and not one of them passed, not one passed. And it's very clear that there are some, everybody's not on the same page. Work needs to be done, so that's the purpose of this. I would really encourage my colleagues on the council, if you have an opportunity, and these, this session on September 27th from 1:00 to 4:30, so that, I think that's a Thursday, it is in the middle of the day, it's at Pickering Barn here in Issaquah. And they're, and they're holding many different types of sessions, and this is one for elected officials. But there are, there are many opportunities for all people to be involved. This is specifically for electeds. And so that is, I enjoyed it quite a bit, hearing from others as well. I encourage you to maybe make that if you can. So that's my fourth and final report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. Thank you, Paul, for chairing for me and for the report out. The next meeting of Land and Shore is October 4th at 6:30 PM here in council chambers. The agenda has not been set yet. That concludes my very short report.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel Batiste.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Eastside Human Services Forum Board will be meeting Thursday, the 20th, at 8:30 AM in Bellevue. On the agenda is the East King County Agencies and King County Funding and Overview and Presentation regarding that. Also, a review of the September event, which was the Opiate and Heroin Crisis Next Steps to Making a Difference, and also the 2019 Work Plan Goals. I was only able to attend the last half of the Opiate and Heroin Crisis Next Steps to Making a Difference, but it was really an amazing event. They had brought people together from, from all over to talk about everything that's happening in that arena. So I'll look forward to getting the report out so I can better report back to council on the overview of that event. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President Martz.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met last Wednesday, the 12th, at 7:00 PM in Renton City Hall. We started it with a pre-PIC meeting on OPMA and special meetings, and what constitutes a special meeting. And I, once again, want to encourage, those pre-PIC meetings are open to all council members because we don't, you know, we're not discussing specific city policies, so it's kind of free as part of our membership with SCA. So if you're interested, not every speaker is scintillating, but this one was. In terms of things that were on the agenda, there was one item for potential future action. It was the draft 2019 SCA legislative agenda. They, they wanted to get it to one page, and they wanted like three items to focus, you know, to focus attention. Where have we, where have we heard that before? So I would ask, I've emailed out to all of you the relevant section out of the packet. If you could get back to me, this will, this will be returning at the October SCA meeting, and I would like to be able to reflect how our city feels about this. What I will probably do is ask at the next full council meeting, and for the good of the order, to have a conversation about that agenda so that I can say, you know, my city thinks that, which is the most powerful thing you can say at PIC. So GMPC, Growth Management Policy Council, is going to be meeting on Thursday, September 25th, and I don't have the agenda for that yet, but it's going to be at 4:00 PM in PSRC chambers. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. Moving on to the mayor's report, which was distributed earlier today, there will be an executive session held this evening to discuss pending and potential litigation per 42.30.110 per N1 per N I. This item is expected to last 10 minutes, and action is anticipated following an open session. Last few weeks, on September 13th, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council's Transportation Policy Board meeting, and also the Local Crew, which is Construction and Real Estate Women's Networking Meeting, as a panelist speaker with five other female mayors. On September 13th, I attended the Built Green Conference as a panelist speaker with Mayor Tolbert of Arlington and Mayor Wallen of Kirkland. And on September 14th, I attended the Leadership Eastside Mayor's Lunch as a panelist speaker with 11 other mayors. So September must somehow be Mayor's Month. There was a lot of mayor stuff going on. For community outreach, I, September 4th, attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Just Poke. Also hosted a Q&amp;A session with our senior center. On September 6th, I attended Influence the Choice with some other council members. I know at least Council President Martz was there, but I think there were a few others as, and Councilmember Winterstein. It was a five-year celebration, and the city was presented with a plaque for continuous support of youth substance abuse prevention efforts in the greater Issaquah area. On September 7th, I attended a Timber Ridge Community Meeting as a guest speaker, along with Ken Konixmark and Brooke Scholl of the Talis Residents Association. And on September 8th, I volunteered at Fred Meyer with the Issaquah Food Bank for the Mayor's Month of Concern for the Hungry, which is going on every Saturday in September. On September 11th, I attended the Talis Homeowners Association Meeting as a guest speaker. I also wanted to provide three updates tonight. First, on our strategic plan. We are continuing to work on Our Issaquah, which is the name for our citywide strategic plan. There's an updated draft of the vision, mission, and guiding principle. A version of the updated draft is planned to be reviewed by your city council at the work session next Monday on September 24th. At this work session, there'll also be an initial look at draft goal statements and objectives that have been prepared by staff workgroups. There will be additional information and opportunities for input later this week, and you can always find more information and provide feedback by visiting the city's website at issaquahwa.gov/OurIssaquah. Also wanted to remind those in the audience and those watching that October is the beginning of budget discussions. I will be presenting the mayor's budget to council, and we will begin a series of meetings to review and discuss the proposed budget for 2019. We're anticipating approval of the budget at a December council meeting. And the last update I wanted to give, I know a lot of people in the community have been tracking this, but the new teen café called The Garage, located by the community center, will have its grand opening this Saturday. It's located at 235 First Avenue Southeast, just below the pool. And that concludes the mayor's report. Proceeding to the consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll for September 17th been reviewed?
They have.
They have. Thank you. And does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt the consent calendar as listed in this evening's agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing. AB 7605 is the 2018 First Budget Amendment. We're here tonight to conduct a public hearing and adopt the ordinance. I'd like to invite Finance Director Jen Olson to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. The purpose of this Agenda Bill is for additional budget requirements and amendments necessary to cover expenditures and revenues that had not been anticipated in the original adoption of the 2018 budget. There are proposed amendments that the council has authorized via Agenda Bill previously this year. Those include expenditures for additional staffing, grant-related spending, and reauthorizations from 2017, primarily related to capital project and cash flow, for cash flow purposes. The proposed amendments also include budget true-ups. These are to correct things like unbalanced transfers for funds where a transfer must match, a transfer in must match a transfer out. There are also a number of agenda types that we included, such as a pass-through, which could also be included as a budget true-up. These amendments are required when the adopted appropriation level within the fund is changing, based on state statutes. That's defined for how we have to go about a budget amendment utilizing a public hearing. There are a number of exhibits included with the proposed ordinance. There is line item detail of those budget amendments and the funds that they affect. There is also the exhibit to the ordinance that identifies the original budget for revenues and expenditures, the proposed amendment, and then the proposed new budget for revenue and expenditures, and estimates of fund balance. Please note that fund balance is always an estimate until we have some final audited financial statements. The fund balance numbers for beginning 2018 are primarily set as we have completed the preliminary financial statement. However, the auditor's office has not come to Issaquah yet for that audit field work. The September 4th council meeting is where the council set this public hearing for, for the amendments and referred to the Council Services and Safety Committee. There was one revision in the proposed budget amendments, and this was an additional transfer in revenue source to the Street Capital Project Fund coming from the School Safety Zone Fund, and that was done through a budget amendment. But that is the revision that has been provided with the Agenda Bill online for the public to review. This public hearing on the Agenda Bill held today, we're certainly aware that the council's desire is to have a public hearing and then a subsequent council meeting where you would consider and take action. However, because timing is necessary for the 2019 budget preparation, this budget amendment is proposed to be acted on this evening. So with that, I would certainly be happy to answer any questions about the proposed amendments.
Thank you, Jen. And I did forget to say at the beginning that this was coming back from the Services and Safety Committee, so there has been a council committee.
That's correct. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. Is it possible, or do you expect that there will be any other budget amendments for the 2018?
Well, for 2018, timing-wise, there, if there is, it may be a small one, if we might do a revenue adjustment, but it's possible that there will not be. Typically, there's usually two or three budget amendments. We like to do one after a first quarter if we know something that is truly come up at the beginning of the year that early. But it is typical for there to be an amendment in the late summer and fall. We also do not like to do budget amendments so close to the final budget for that particular year because then they're really looked at as unnecessary because you're just, you know, increasing the budget or decreasing the budget based on actuals.
Okay. That segues into my next question, which is about, there are a lot of components to this budget, budget amendment, there are a lot of line items, and I wondered what the pros and cons of doing more than one amendment, or so having an earlier, an earlier version broken out into multiple pieces.
Multiple budget amendments may offer up a condensed list, a smaller list, but it really depends on the issues and the unforeseen expenditures and revenues that do come up throughout the year. That would, that would dictate the amount of line items that are in the proposed budget amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt, I just want to clarify. I think what I'm hearing you say is that going forward into next year, you, you have a preference for seeing more than one budget amendment so that it is smaller.
Right. I think in, in, my personal preference would be to see more than one amendment. I, and I did know that previously that it has been done that way, so I was interested in why or why not do it that way. But it just is a little more adjustable, I think, with fewer line items.
Thanks. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I didn't quite understand the reason for having the, take action tonight after the hearing rather than the next meeting.
Historically, or in the past, the council has taken action, setting a public hearing at one meeting, at a subsequent meeting, then holding the public hearing, and then taking action on the budget amendments. It is not required, however, because timing is of the essence so that we can provide 2018 projections for the 2019 budget discussions, the administration is asking that the council would take action tonight after the public hearing.
Okay, the timing is because we're preparing the budget for next year.
Correct.
And so further delays, I mean, taking us into October, when is generally when we present the, the proposed budget for next year.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Ray.
Just a couple of clarifications. So the budget amendment impacts ending fund balances.
Yes, it does.
And it lowers our funding, ending fund balance, right?
This proposed budget amendment is expected to decrease, lower, the current budget decrease in ending fund balance.
Will that have any impact on the overall financial health of the city or financial position of the city?
Well, this, because this covers all funds, and this primarily incorporates budget amendments for, for capital project funds, which are typically, they're traditionally, they're meant to be spent, they're for a capital investment. And so where you're, where you're paying for making these capital improvements, you're getting an asset, a fixed asset, in exchange for another asset cash. So it is important to note that that doesn't necessarily degrade financial health. Your, your capital investments go up if you, if you monitor financial statements, you have that exchange of asset.
But let me, let me paraphrase back at you. So even with us doing this budget amendment, we are still in a solid financial position as a city.
That is correct.
Council President Martz.
Can I ask the question more pointedly? So ending fund balance ratio is the estimated ending fund balance over expenditures, yes?
That's correct.
So as I look at page 234 of the packet tonight, I see an estimated ending fund balance of 16 million, 700 and some odd thousand dollars, and an amended expenditure of 52 million, 200 and some odd thousand dollars. Yes? So, so my math gives, gives that as a 31.5% ending fund balance on the, on the general fund?
That's correct.
If those are, if that's the right numerator and denominator?
Yes.
That seems very healthy indeed.
It is very healthy.
There we go. All right. That's what I wanted, I wanted to double-check because I hear what you say about those other funds, they're meant to be spent.
Yes.
I got that. But the general fund is the one that, you know, rating services and whatnot tend to look at, yes?
That's correct. The, the financial management policy identifies the council's general fund reserve target with a range of 15% to 20%. So 31% to ending fund balance is quite healthy.
Yes. And I think we may later in the, later in the year have some ideas on how to redress that particular issue.
Perhaps, yes. Thank you.
And I wonder if you could add one more clarification. When you're doing a budget amendment and you're doing a revenue adjustment, you are not going through all the potential revenue sources and projecting them forward. You are more or less just putting in those that are known to be new?
Those that are known to be new for revenues. Unless there is a major windfall, then you would see an increase in a revenue forecast, but typically not going, you know, those individual for those small revenue line items.
So on the revenue estimate going forward, this is a pretty conservative approach to estimating the revenues through year-end.
It is, that's correct.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if all the council members were aware of that. Councilmember Ramos?
And just to reiterate for me, predominantly for the public, all these things that are in here have been discussed and approved by council previously. This is basically paperwork, putting them in the budget officially. We've already approved all this in actuality.
That's correct. There's a fair number of Agenda Bills that, the council already addressed those, and in the, the budget amendment log, you'll note the Agenda Bill where it's referenced the council had previously taken action to direct this budget amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good clarification. Any other questions? Councilmember Winterstein.
I don't have a question, but I do want to echo, do a plus-one to Vicky's comment earlier. Having these Having these bundled up and arriving in mid-September, obviously, it's an accounting exercise, and that can work, but I would like, if at all possible, my preference would be that if we can, if it can be done, some of these could have been done earlier. I would prefer that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments or questions? And I would be looking for, oh, no, I'm not. Seeing no further questions. The guidelines for citizen comments also apply to those made under the public hearing for this item. So I now open the public hearing at 7:52. Has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item this evening? Anyone in the audience that would like to speak? And last chance, anyone wishing to address the council at the public hearing this evening? Seeing none, I close the public hearing at 7:53. And I would be looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance number?
2844.
Amending the 2018 budget as set forth in ordinance number 2818 concerning revenue, expenditures, and fund balances for various funds for the year 2018, and authorizing the finance director to make necessary adjustments and approving prior expenditures.
Second. Thanks. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember A.
I want to just note, I think the most important thing about this piece of work is that it is fundamentally an accounting catch-up, and so what we're doing is making our books match our new reality. And even though we are not factoring in actuals as revenue or expenses go, we are finding ourselves in a very strong financial position, and the amendment doesn't really materially affect that. So I think that it is due time to make the updates and get our books in order and move forward and prepare for the next budget cycle.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments or discussion? Council President Martz.
I have to state to my shock and horror that my math was off earlier, and it's actually just slightly over 32% ending fund balance.
Shock and horror.
So I apologize to everyone, and evidently, I can't do long division even with electronic assistance.
Well, we'll consider whether or not we'll accept your apology. Any other comments or discussion? Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2844, amending the 2018 budget as set forth in ordinance number 2818 concerning revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for various funds for the year 2018, and authorizing the finance director to make the necessary adjustments and approving prior expenditures, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. We're moving on to regular business, and the next item on the agenda is AB 7654, Puget Sound Energy Green Direct 2 Agreement. And this item is coming out of Council Services and Safety Committee. I'd like to invite Sustainability Director David Fujimoto to make a presentation.
Good evening, councilmembers. Again, David Fujimoto, Department of Sustainability. And I have a real quick presentation I'll go through. This is coming from Services, but wanted to give a good overview of what Green Direct 2 is all about. So Green Direct 2 is a program of our local energy utility, Puget Sound Energy. It's a program that is relatively unique in the nation, so actually a relatively innovative program. Puget Sound Energy is one of the first utilities to come out with this type of an arrangement. It's geared towards just large customers and municipal customers, and it's important that it affects only the electric side of the equation. And basically, the idea is to increase the quantity of renewable power that's supplied to some of their larger customers. It's also important to note that it's a part of a tariff that's passed through the Washington State Utilities and Transportation Commission. They're the body at the state level that regulates rates for Puget Sound Energy, which is a regulated utility. As a result, the tariff itself has been through a vetting process in terms of the overall costs associated with it. The tariff itself also provides for new energy facilities or resource, if you will, to these customers. It's specifically linked to our participating accounts, which is important, as I'll talk about in terms of flexibility later on. It includes both a charge for the renewable power as well as a credit for the standard fuel mix, and it's a long-term arrangement. So that's something to keep in mind, in part why we're talking about this with council. A little bit of background, this might be some important information to convey, and it's not widely known, I think, that the fuel mix, although we are a part of the country with a large percentage of hydropower, Puget Sound Energy's fuel mix, meaning their supply sources for the electricity that they provide to their customers, including Issaquah, is actually predominantly from non-renewable sources. So actually, about 37% of their fuel mix is coming from coal. They have coal-fired plants in western Montana, a town of Coal Strip. Cities had some legislative pieces in the past where we've supported some work to encourage PSC and support PSC in the transition away from those fossil fuel-based sources. And then there's also another 22% on natural gas, so combined about 59% from non-renewable resources, about 31% for hydro. And Puget Sound Energy is the largest utility provider in Washington State, actually. So as I mentioned before, Green Direct is both a charge and a credit. So what you'll see here in this particular case is Puget Sound Energy had essentially let a request for proposals for new renewable power generation. This one was for solar generation, and they received a proposal for one in southeastern Washington, which is a pretty, and we're talking large utility-scale solar projects. And this one happened to be particularly well situated, meaning it was close to transmission lines. The operator had planned for some energy credits and tax incentives ahead of time, so they're kind of well positioned to come in with a very good proposal. The contract itself starts with, because it's a long-term arrangement, it provides for a fixed pricing at the start, and it continues for the term of the agreement, and it has an adjustment factor of about, of 2% per year. And then it deals with RECs, which are renewable energy credits, which are just a commodity associated with renewable power. It's also important to include that it doesn't include a lot of these other pieces, transmission, distribution, billing, meter reading, customer service, all these other functions that are provided by the utility. Those pieces remain intact. Nothing changes. There's no change in the rate for that portion of their service. As I mentioned, there's also a credit. So while we're buying renewable power, we're also getting a credit for the power we're not using, and that's the standard fuel mix, that 59% that's non-renewable power that PSC would otherwise get from the grid. So we get a credit for that cost that they would normally be providing to the city as a customer. And again, the credit doesn't include all those other kinds of functions that are typical of the power utility. And then I think the most important piece here is that this kind of standard fuel mix, the rates associated with that change over time. So it's based on what their general rate cases are to the Washington State Utilities and Transportation Commission. So while the Green Direct contract is fixed and provides for some stability, the kind of standard fuel mix may fluctuate over time depending on what their rate cases may show. As a result of that, as you kind of think about long-term investment, there's a number of factors that will affect energy costs over time. Some are more bullish or more bearish. If you look at the average of their adjustments over the past 15 years, it's about 2.4%. The regionally planning, you'll see in Puget Sound's IRP, which is their Integrated Resource Plan, they're actually looking at, they're projecting a 6% rate. The Northwest Power Planning Council uses a 3% rate. So just to kind of give you an idea of where are some of the other factors in terms of thinking about long-term trends in energy prices. This is a quick chart just to show comparison between Green Direct 2 rates, which is the dark, the green line, and then some projections of current rates at various levels. And we went ahead and included a relatively low 1.5% rate, that's far lower than historical or the regional planning efforts, and that's the orange line. PSC's 15-year average at 2.4% is the kind of cyan or, I don't know, blue line, I guess, there. And then the Northwest Power Planning Council at 3% is the purple line, the uppermost line. With this contract, you might be aware that about a year ago, the city signed up a number of accounts under the first offering of Green Direct, and that was for primarily a wind generation plant in southwestern Washington. And so at that point in time, we had signed up a fair number of city accounts, but we also chose to reserve a number of accounts, wanting to take into consideration some future facility plans. And also, I think there was an interest in thinking about, can we also identify some other renewable power sources which had lower environmental impacts? Because there is some impacts associated with wind power. Solar is among the cleanest, if you will, of the renewable power sources. So we did sign up a number of accounts before. We have about a third or so remaining, and that allows us also to think about kind of laddering some of those investments over time, so some dollar-cost averaging might be possible as well. So with this next contract, we're proposing adding about 17 accounts. It's about 1.7 million kilowatt-hours per year, and this would bring us up to, in total, about 95% of the city's electrical power coming from renewable resources. So that's a pretty great opportunity, a great statement in terms of the city's investment in our work. When you look at this fiscally, because it's a long-term contract, this is showing the effect of an 18-year contract, and it would start in 2021. There you can see both the Green Direct charge as well as the credit, and you'll see that there's actually a net savings in the first year of the contract, and that continues out for many years, and I believe it's not until the last few years of the contract where the prices are actually higher based on, and this is based on a 1.5% forecast. So really competitive rates, when you look at that over the total term of that contract, not in net present dollars, it ends up being about savings of almost $28,000. So real quickly on some benefits and considerations, this is a new resource that would be added to the existing power supply in the northwest, so it's not just like we're buying extra credits or something, it's actually generating or developing new sources. It has extremely low environmental impacts, as I mentioned before, difference between wind and solar, for example, very cost competitive. It's flexible because of the way in which the program works is that it's assigned to individual accounts. Puget Sound Energy actually allows you to transfer from account to account. So if, for example, the city were to, you know, close a facility or rebuild a certain facility, we could move the Green Direct enrollment from one account to another. They also don't specify any kind of firm demand, so they don't, we're not committing to a certain amount of kilowatt-hours either. So we actually, and they're fine with us making energy efficiency improvements, or there being kind of demand reductions over time, those aren't factored into this. They're mostly looking for accounts. So it still allows us to be more efficient in our operations and pursue other opportunities there. And then in a big way, it also helps to address community climate goals for greenhouse gas reductions, as well as it's implementing a piece in our recently adopted Sustainable Building Action Strategy, which was adopted last year. There are a number of cities and other agencies and businesses that have enrolled in Puget Sound Green Direct. Most of these are from the first round of enrollment. This latest round, we haven't gotten the final list of who would be participating because of the timing of when Puget Sound Energy was opening their enrollment and their expected really high demand. They were expecting, they were opening at 1:00 p.m., and they, I think, were filled by, within a matter of hours, so there really was kind of high demand for that. And as a result of that, the administration went ahead and submitted a placeholder application while we are taking the time to consider this through council. We did hear back from Puget Sound Energy that we did make the list. So our recommendation is that we enroll the remaining eligible accounts. Given the pricing, we believe it makes sense to look at a long-term 18-year agreement. And this is, as I said, consistent with some of our other work, to evaluate efficiency improvements in our existing facilities, find energy savings where we can, so we can continue that work ahead. And then as we start to make some adjustments in our facilities or come up with facility plans, we can also reevaluate the portfolio and make some changes as we go. And that is it.
Thank you, David. And this came out of Services and Safety, and I'm wondering if the chair would like to have any comments or just open it up to comments and questions.
What, comments and questions?
Comments and questions. Councilmember Ramos.
Yeah, just to clarify some of the things you said there. So if I heard your numbers right, this, the amount between Green Direct 1 and 2 will be hitting 95% of our utility use in the city as of now?
That would be once, so this, so Green Direct 1 will be going into effect in mid-year of 2019. This would be going into effect 2021. So once we hit 2021, 95% of the electric power generation will be renewable resources. Of course, we still have natural gas that's operating, being used in a number of our buildings, so that's not covered by this.
And then, and so that's basically almost all of our facilities are going to be wrapped into that?
That's correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Martz.
So help me understand the big picture here. We're going to, by doing this, we're going to spend less on electricity than we would otherwise?
It, that is the potential scenario. So depending on what happens with PSC rates, so if PSC rates, for example, stayed flat for the next 18 years, we would be paying more. If they increase by more than 1.5% on average over that term, we'll be saving substantially more. So it really depends on how the contract compares to actual.
So there's no such thing as a free lunch. How does this, where's, help me understand, like, who benefits? Because my understanding is renewable energy is still, generally speaking, more expensive than fossil fuels, which is why the whole country hasn't moved to wind farms and solar. So how are we getting it less expensive?
So one of, so that's a big question with lots of answers, but I think one way of thinking about it is that this is a, although it's a utility-scale investment, it's also small-scale relative to the overall power grid. So power needs to flow 24/7. Solar obviously only generates during the daytime. Similar issues with wind, although it's, you know, it's different cycles in terms of when the wind blows. So Bonneville Power Authority has a balancing authority. That's their responsibility in the region is to balance all the demands with all the sources. And because we have that capacity in the region, you can add these types of facilities and provide that kind of service. So what we're not, what we're buying through this is the power generation that's added to the supply system. We're not actually buying those actual electrons that are going from that plant to our specific buildings, because we can't do that. So essentially, what we're doing is buying added capacity within the overall power system, and on the project-level basis, because of the conditions associated with this one, able to get a great rate. If you're trying to extrapolate that to replacement of the entire grid, it's an entirely different story.
Of course. Okay. That's extremely helpful, and now I understand.
Great.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel President Batiste.
Thank you, David. Could you speak a little bit to coal and the energy mix in general? There are some things changing in that area with Coal Strip?
There is. So as I mentioned before, if I can get there, so this is PSC's, Puget Sound Energy's fuel mix as of 2016. It changes a little bit from year to year, but there has been some work to think about replacement of that, those non-renewable sources, and in particular, coal, because from a pollution standpoint, it's the highest emitter of, highest level of emissions. And so there are several utilities which jointly own the Coal Strip plant in western Montana. Puget Sound Energy is one of the major ones, and there's been some work to retire, there's actually four different plants on that site, to retire our Coal Strip plants 1 and 2, and they've agreed to do that, and they have a timeframe for doing that. I forget the closure date. I believe it's 2025. And so that part will be happening. There are also plants 3 and 4, which there are, through some negotiations with some environmental organizations and others, are working on a timeline for closure of the remaining two plants. They've agreed to the timing for the amortization. They've agreed to the timing for the amortization, but that's not the same as the actual closure date for those facilities. So there's, there's some work that's happening in that area, and then also some interest in making sure that as those plants are retired, that the replacement sources are more towards renewables and less towards other non-renewable resources.
Thank you. More questions or comments? Chair Ray, did you want to add anything?
I'd like to move to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the Green Direct 2 agreement with Puget Sound Energy over an 18-year term.
Second. That was Vicki. It's been moved and seconded, is there any council discussion?
So, David, thank you. I think this is pretty exciting. And when, years ago, there was a push towards recycling of paper, it was government demanding that recycled paper be used in government contracts. And this is a very financially sound opportunity for us, but it's also a way for us to provide leadership in terms of making a change to how power is generated in the region. So it's not going to happen without some, some leadership, and it is very exciting for us to be out in front of this, working on something that is sustainable, and also very much aligns with our long-term goal of being good stewards of the environment. So to me, this is something to celebrate, something to move forward with, and something to be really proud of, that we are really walking the talk when it comes to environmental stewardship.
Councilmember Ramos, followed by Deputy Counsel President.
Yeah, it's just to add to that, it does take leadership to move towards this. This is a very painless way of doing leadership. It really isn't costing us much directly, but what we're doing is encouraging, working with PSE, who's taken some of these steps to allow us to join in this program, to start to build those alternative energy sources for the grid. And it's a long-term process to do that and shift that out, and by being part of this, we are part of that process of shifting over to renewable energy sources. So I'm very happy to be a part of this, too.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel President Batiste.
So this is something we had an opportunity to talk about in the past, and we, we talked about this, and we were excited about this, and enrolled some of the accounts, and this is the ability to enroll almost all of the city accounts. And I'm, I'm excited that, that we're making that move, and I just wanted to thank David and his whole team for paying really close attention to that, going ahead and submitting the application and getting the placeholder in. So we were able to have some time to talk this through, have this go to council, but I think that this really just makes all the sense in the world, and I, and I do believe it is an opportunity for us to be a leader in this area.
Any other comments? Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute the Green Direct 2 agreement with Puget Sound Energy over an 18-year term, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is opposed? That carries unanimously. Next and last item on regular business for us this evening is AB 7665, the 2019 Legislative Agenda. This item is coming out of the September 10th Council Committee Work Session, and I'd like to invite management analysts, Jean Paul and Liesl Olsen, to make a presentation.
Good evening. My name is Jean Paul, and I'm a management analyst in the executive office, and I'm joined by my fellow analyst, Liesl Olsen. We're here this evening to present the final draft of the 2019 to 2021 Legislative Agenda. To help fame presentation, the administration is ultimately asking the council to adopt the Legislative Agenda. We presented our first draft last week on the 10th and provided time for you to answer the questions, are the priorities identified correct and clear, and is the language we have presented strong enough or too strong? We have incorporated your feedback into the latest version of the Legislative Agenda, and we are prepared to collect any additional comments this evening. This timeline will help provide additional context to why we are here this evening. We have moved up the agenda process from previous years in order to create and approve the Legislative Agenda in time to potentially influence the governor's budget proposal, which is produced prior to the actual legislative session. Staff members have been working with our consultants since June to develop this agenda, and we're here tonight to present what we have produced to you. Other important dates on the horizon include the Legislative Breakfast, which is tentatively scheduled for either December 11th or the 13th, and the actual legislative session beginning in January and running through March. To review, the Legislative Agenda priorities contain the top three funding requests for the issues that the city deems most critical to both ongoing operations and the community's long-term vision. The priorities, which are seeking funds from the operating, transportation, and capital budgets, are the funding for the pilot cleanup to remove PFOS, PFAS, implementation of I-90 Front Street interchange justification report, and the transit-oriented development with the Opportunity Center. At the September 10th Work Session, we did not receive any request to change any of these priorities. We did have a question from one council member concerning how public opinion shaped these priorities, which led to our desire for public comment. To obtain this public input, we published the agenda, called attention to it on our website, and provided an email address for feedback. There were over 300 people who viewed that news piece, but we received no comments from that process. We did receive one email outside of this engagement effort. Based upon all the feedback collected, there were ultimately no changes to the Agenda priorities. Liesl will now provide an overview of the policy manual and its updates.
Good evening, councilmembers. So as you'll remember, the policy manual represents other issues that are important to the City of Issaquah and presents an opportunity to support, oppose, or monitor positions of interest to Issaquah. So based on feedback from last Monday's Work Session, we addressed four changes within the policy manual. You'll see these changes in the standalone document in your packet entitled Changes to the Policy Manual. The first change was moving the statement around condominium building from the land use and GMA section to the affordable housing, health, human services, and homelessness category. The second change was the addition of a statement concerning broadband and small cell networks to the economic development and infrastructure category. The third change was an expansion on the policy around product stewardship within the environment and natural resources category. You'll see that there are now two statements on product stewardship. One is supporting the expansion of product stewardship for recycling and paint efforts, and the other one is opposing efforts to reduce funding for prescription drug product stewardship. The last change that you'll see was the addition of a statement on protecting state-shared revenues from the taxation of marijuana, and that was added to the budget and fiscal matters category. We did not receive any public comments on the policy manual. So with that, we would like to thank you for your presentation and open up to talk with council about the direction of the Legislative Agenda.
Thank you, Liesl. Thank you, Jean. Does council have any questions?
I have a couple.
Okay, let's start with Councilmember Ray, and then go to Councilmember Hunt.
So, since I was the one who wanted some sort of public input, and you mentioned that there were 300-ish hits on the news story, do you have any idea how many of those hits came from within the city?
We don't. And so just to clarify that, the message was sent to a lister that had 300 folks, I think, view the email, and we only saw, I think, one or two folks actually click through into Jean's email address, which was attached to that for providing comments.
Okay, so we sent it out to 300 people, but we didn't, didn't really generate any, any traction or any input from, from the community?
No.
Okay.
More questions, or should I move to Councilmember Hunt?
Move on, please.
Okay, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I had a question about if there were other priorities considered in the agenda other than the top three, and if those are, appear in the policy manual, or if they are slated to be discussed at a later date.
Can I get Administrator Moon to chime in, having had a longer history with how the whole agenda was set up?
Sure. We did have conversations about other potential priorities. These seem to be the ones that were, I'll say, bigger dollar item possibilities, and the lobbyists, as you heard on the 10th, really encouraged us to utilize this year's situation to go big, ask for some bigger projects. And so that was one of the filters we used as we considered what to ask for. They also advised us on the type of projects that tend to get traction, either in the governor's budget or with the state legislators. We, we went through a process, particularly on the capital side. We frequently asked for dollars to assist with capital projects, so we looked at some of the outstanding capital projects of the city, including those that have received support in the past, because you can have a little bit easier time seeking funds for a second phase than a brand-new project. So we certainly did consider some, but these were the ones that rose to the top.
Okay. And then, related to that, in looking back at previous legislative agendas, I understand this process was a different lobbyist, so a little bit different process. You, in comparison to those other ones, it's a smaller list of priorities, but you would say that it's sort of bigger picture, is that right?
I would say, overall, it's about the same number of top priorities, maybe less by one, let's say, on average. This year's strategy differed in that our lobbyists really encouraged us to have one top priority for each of those three different budget buckets, whereas in the past, we may have had two or three capital projects, and maybe one, one operating ask. So that's the difference here, is we really tried to limit it to one project in each of those different budgets.
Deputy Counsel President Batiste.
Thank you for the presentation. I, I have a question that actually falls maybe a little bit outside of the three top Legislative Agenda pieces that we're talking about here, and that is, one of the things that they had talked about is that there was a slight possibility that there might be a mini-transportation package being put together, and they didn't really have any information to know. Is that something that, if that did happen, would we turn to our transportation, transit piece and those bullet points, and would, or is there something that we've thought of that we would want to add, or because we have I-90 Front Street, is that something that we would push forward? I'm just wondering what would happen in, in that case?
Sure. If past is guidance on that, usually the lobbyists would contact us and say, it looks like we will indeed have a mini-package, it's going to be of this size, therefore, they would encourage us to then produce extra projects to help fill that allotment. Right now, we do have that IJR request that would come from the transportation budget, but it's not uncommon for lobbyists to, if they get new information and it looks like the available funding is greater than what was previously anticipated, or if a particular legislator gets excited about a project, or has indication that there will be more available to his or her district, then sometimes they reach back to us and ask us for an additional project. And yes, we would turn back to the policy manual and look at those projects that we've had conversations with councilmembers about in the past, and, and seek some concurrence from you to move forward and, and ask for funding on, on that particular project.
Okay. One more, one more question, and that was in regard to the timeline. On your slides, you had talked about this being done before the governor's budget, and so what is the timeline for that? When is the governor's budget proposed to be put together?
So my understanding is the actual budget proposal will be released sometime in December, but the state agencies are already required to start that discussion in terms of what will be in the proposal in September, and basically the September to October timeframe is when that budget proposal will be assembled.
So those conversations are already starting in September?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ray.
So I'm going to do a little follow-up on Deputy President Batiste's question. So what would happen if the council did not take action tonight and were to defer action until, say, our October 1st meeting?
That is within, we've kind of, we've looked at additional meetings. If you were looking to come back to a different meeting, there is, like, we have, there's a couple of week window where that would work. We would ask you for some direction around the PFOS issue, because that is really the one issue where we have an inter-agency collaboration, and so that's where we would like to see, hear some direction on if that's going to remain on the city's list of priorities, so that we could have that prepared with the governor's budget.
Not sure I heard the answer there.
Sorry.
Okay, we'll let you take a second stab, and we'll take a second stab at the answer. We're going to put the city administrator on.
Okay.
So I think what we've heard from the city's lobbyists is it's probably not going to be detrimental to take a couple extra weeks, except for potentially our request on PFOS, and that is because we are engaged in a bit of a collaborative request on, with Department of Ecology, and they are preparing their budget and are going to be submitting it very shortly. So we want to be a line item in that, and there's a little bit of risk that if we don't act now or provide some assurance that that will remain a priority of the city in a request on our behalf, that it, we may not be able to get it in, since Ecology is preparing that budget for the governor's review.
Thank you.
Help?
Yeah, that's great.
Deputy Counsel President Batiste.
So this, I think this might be for city administrator Moon to answer, but I'm, I'm not sure. Is there a risk of that the typical process is that the Legislative Agenda priorities come forward from a city, in this case, where we may potentially, if, if some of it was delayed and we pulled PFOS out of there, that, then they might look at that and say, okay, well, there's their, there's their top agenda, and we haven't really addressed the other things that might be on our list? Is there a bit of a risk by pulling those apart, or is that a typical practice?
I don't, I don't believe there's any risk in doing it that way. Again, you have those separate buckets, and this is different in that it's inter-agency collaboration. So I, I don't think that by submitting a request on the PFOS project, that, that would hamper our ability to ask for funds out of those other buckets two weeks later. Okay, thank you.
Looking around for more questions, Councilmember, no? Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, thank you. I look at the agenda, the legislative, legislative agenda, there's, it's only those top priority ones that actually have numbers next to them. And so, and everything else, everything else is statements of, of support, or a request to refrain from doing this, or we're going to monitor that. It's from the conversation I just heard, especially with Ecology, that it's really these first three that there may be somebody sitting in Olympia waiting to get some information from us, because they're preparing their submental for the mayor's budget.
Governor.
Sorry?
Governor's budget.
Yeah, mayor of our state.
Good one, good pick.
No, so, okay, and now, in what's proposed here, it still just has a TBD amount. What are we going to do about that?
We are going to hope that the governor writes in a fill-in-the-blank in that budget, and that we have a little bit of time to continue to have conversations with Ecology, with Eastside Fire and Rescue. We are just now starting to get some of the data back from the Phase 1 study work that's happening, and we needed to get some of that data back, so that we would start to understand what the scope of the next phase might be. And we've received some, but quite frankly, not all that we had anticipated by And we've received some, but quite frankly, not all that we had anticipated by this time, and so we're hoping that in another couple of weeks, we will have that, and we'll be able to send a number. But it would be an extra effort to also, then at that time, try to get just the verbiage in the line-item reservation that we're trying to seek right now.
Right, and we're working with Ecology, Eastside Ecology, right? Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? It's Member Hunt.
This is a follow-up to something you said earlier. If they, if there was an additional ask for, or if there was an opportunity to provide additional asks, it's not clear to me, from the policy manual and from our discussions, what those specific other asks would be. I think this is related to Councilmember Winterstein's point, that it's a list of sort of support and some oppose, but there are three specific projects, and then there are a lot of more general policy statements, but not other projects. And so how, could you elaborate on how that would work if there were opportunities to expand on or change?
My answer is, it depends, and it depends on how much time we have to respond. So typically, what we've done in the past is, we have turned back to that policy document, and we've looked, let's take transportation/ transit as an example. We've looked at the verbiage there, and we've then asked, take the first bullet. The first bullet is, we'd support initiatives that proactively address regional transportation solutions, especially funding for State Route 18 improvements. And so we might then say, ask for additional funds to advance that project. So we'd go, we'd go through the bullets under a particular policy area that looks like it's a focal point for the legislators who are asking for additional projects, and we'd try to pick a project that's aligned with the policy statement you've already endorsed. It's not as specific, but oftentimes, at that moment in time, we don't need to be as specific, or we will attach, State Route 18 is a good example. We'd attach to some other agency that has already started to develop a capital project that we can then just lend support and hopefully some additional funding dollars to.
I think State Route 18 is also a good example. Are they ordered within the categories by priority? That is--
No, not necessarily, although I would say we did have some discussion, particularly on the transportation/ transit section, of putting State Route 18 at the top of the list. But I would not, I would not say that's true of all the other sections. They aren't in a priority order.
It's Member Ray.
So we're currently working with the Department of Ecology, right, on the PFOS/ PFAS study. So this is something that is on their radar screen, and they know that this is likely coming forward. So even as they're working through their initial budget requests to go into the governor's budget, this is probably something that's, that they are aware of. And I recognize that we still have work to do to push it through, but I don't think it's going to be a zero dollar in the departmental budgets.
They are aware, but last year is a perfect indication of probably how they will want to pursue it with Phase 2. They did not ask for funds. We asked for funds on our collective behalf, and lobbyists could probably explain this better than I could, but there's some political circumstances around having a municipality ask for funds rather than the Department of the state. So I suspect that would be the same logic this year, in that they would prefer for us to make the ask, even though they're a partner in that endeavor.
Thank you.
More questions? It's Member Winterstein.
We had a comment this evening from Mr. Kapler from the public about state parks, and I apologize, I didn't write the comment down. It kind of logs in my mind, but I didn't forget about it. And we really don't have, I did look again, and there really isn't a section in here that has anything to do with state parks. But I also know that, because I've heard this from the mouth from, I think, the chair of the State Parks Commission recently, within the last few months, maybe back in June or July, around the AVP time, they've got quite a bit in the pipeline coming. They've got, there's major capital investments going into the state park. They're going to be redoing the lawn. They're going to be including building more picnic areas and having volleyball courts at them. And they're going to be building a dock, and they know about the timing of all of that. And so over the next probably three years, there's major capital investment already approved going into the state park. Now, for something like that, I mean, I don't, I don't know that it really matters if it's on our agenda or not. That's already kind of done. I think that money is appropriated. It's available to the commission, the State Parks Commission, and they're lining up the work. They're scheduling everything. So I don't think we need anything in our legislative agenda to say, "And that thing you've already approved, we still support it." I mean, I don't think we tend to do that. But, so it's not like there, but is, do we know, is there a reason that there isn't? Did we consider anything that would have been state park-related? Or is it just that, everything we know about state parks, we're feeling kind of like, you know, we've got a lot of good things going on, and it didn't rise to this level that we need, that we expect some other legislative, legislation, whether it be policy or budget, to come along that we felt we needed to lend our voice to?
Yeah, I'd be happy to address that. Typically, we have gone to state parks, and we have asked, "What help do you need? How can we assist?" And there wasn't a request this year for us to advocate for some capital funding, for example. I think that ongoing operational support, the advocacy will be there, no matter what. But we're not making a capital request this year. We have multiple times over past years, and I would say, this year, we still have a need to execute, not just on the projects that you named, but we had a joint ask for some funds for master planning and an update to the EIS. That work has not been completed yet, and I think in order for us to be successful for a subsequent capital ask or professional services ask, we need to finish the work that we have already been granted funds for.
All right, thank you.
Questions? Just a couple of council members who haven't had a chance, so I'm just kind of looking at you to see if you want to weigh in. And if not, I'll be looking for a motion. Member Ray.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move to direct the administration to engage the public on the legislative agenda, Agenda Bill 7665, before October 1st, 2018, and then refer Agenda Bill 7665 to a special Services and Safety Committee meeting on September 25th, returning to full council on October 1st, 2018, for final action.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Do you have the words for all of that, Mr. Ray? Councilmember Ray, it's a little different than what's in the packet.
No, it's not.
Or did you just go straight down, action, and then two--
No, it's what's in the packet. I want to make it easy for you as possible.
In the packet or on this?
On the sheet.
Oh, yes, thank you. Okay. So I'm going to reread it, just to make sure. "Direct the administration to engage the public on the legislative agenda, AB 7665, before October 1st, 2018, and refer AB 7665 to a special services and safety committee on September 25th, returning to the full city council on October 1st, 2018, for action." Great. Discussion. Councilmember Ray, Councilmember Hunt.
So, one of the things that's really important to me is that we engage with the public and that we understand their priorities. There's a limited ability to engage with the state, and we've talked about that extensively, about really focusing on those three things that are most important. And these may be those three things, but it's not a determination that I want to make without more input. There's many things that we could ask the state to assist with, and I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to solicit feedback from the public and factor that into our decision-making process. And also, I think we have time. I think we have time to do this and give it a little more transparency and a little more opportunity for public engagement. So I would feel more comfortable going forward if we can actively engage with the community and make sure that our view of priorities for the legisla, next legislative session align to the community's views of our priorities.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt, followed by Council President Marts.
Thank you. I think there is a lot of context here, and a lot of it is complicated. Some of these, some of these top priorities have been priorities of the city for a long time. Some, I think, are newer or have newer components. But there's a lot of context of the history behind a lot of these items, and then there's also a lot of, in terms of understanding how the legislature works, there's a lot of context about the city, and how the city works in the region, and how the city works with the state, and the lobbyist role. And I think that there's a lot of conversation that we could have with the community about all of those things, and about how to represent their community values through this legislative agenda. I think that we may need to explore different ways to engage with the community, possibly because this is a list of policy matters. It's hard for the community to know how to respond to, for example, a one-line solicitation on the website about, "We have a legislative agenda. Would you like to email your comments?" I think we may need to, or that, I think there's an opportunity here to be maybe more creative or try to engage with the community in a different way to let them know what the legislative agenda really is, what it could potentially do for our city, what it's done for the city in the past, and how we might best represent their views. And so I am in support of this motion. I'm in support of trying to engage with the community more and to also have a fuller and more robust conversation. Also, in this meeting, I've come to realize that I think there could be more stratification of the policy manual. I think that we could try to expand on why things are in the policy manual in the locations that they are, and if they're, if they are prioritized, I think that might be helpful, especially, as City Administrator Moon said, sometimes things might be time-sensitive. It might be good to know ahead of time what our priorities are in terms of the policies beyond the top three. And for these reasons, I think we, I think we would benefit from having more discussion, and I would, I am in support of the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Council President Marts, followed by Councilmember Goodman.
So unfortunately, I'm going to have to oppose this measure, and if this measure fails, I'll be moving the original bill that's in our packet with the staff recommendation. And I have six reasons why I oppose this. The first is that we are following a tradition that works well, and has worked well in the past, for the legislative agenda. On November 14th of 2016, we heard the draft 2017 Legislative Agenda in Work Session chaired by former Council President Goodman. Public comment was received then, and then a week later, in full council, we approved it, and we made an amendment to it. Then again, on November 13th, 2017, we heard the draft 2018 Legislative Agenda in Work Session. On the 20th, we received public comment, and on the 20th, we actually approved the agenda with not one, but two amendments. So the process has worked in the past. We've had input, and we've, and we've modified the agenda appropriately. The second is that, oh, yeah, sorry, continuation of the first one, is that, you know, in this current round, we've received, we have received some public input in the form of email. The second point is that, respectfully, I don't think we do have the time to give this a significant further view. The packet for the next full council member is due in 11 days. Services and Safety has a committee meeting tomorrow. They will go to, if this is approved, they will go to their third special meeting of the month to address this. I don't think that if we want to solicit public input, those 11 days are sufficient to make a significant outreach. This did come to council on the 4th of September with a referral to the work session, and if council members had felt that the process was insufficient on the 4th, had they said something then, we would have had quite a bit more time and quite a bit more options on soliciting public input. The third is that staff is starting to spool up on the budget. I think it's going to be a hard task this year, and I think that we're hearing that we're likely to go into December on the budget, and this would be, there's no question, this would be additional work on staff to make this happen. I think that this issue about PFOS, treating PFOS differently than the other two, is problematic for me, because it means that some elements of this bill are more equal than others. And then finally, I have to ask, how do we apply this insufficient public input flag, right? This has happened before, and it sort of begs a broader question, right? Like, somebody could say, "Oh, Puget Sound Energy Green Direct, like, we haven't had sufficient public input on that. Maybe I want the fine folks in Coal Strip to be able to continue mining coal," or whatever, whatever the reasons would be, or I suspect the public, you know, has concerns about the economic implications of tying ourselves to a particular energy stream. But we don't do that, right? We follow a policy. I think that it would be fine if we wanted to talk down the road as a council about a comprehensive community engagement policy. We have such a thing for projects, right? We have a policy in place for how we want to do community engagement. If we feel that we have insufficient community engagement now on strategic issues, I think we should talk about that, but I don't think we should try to rush through an additional public engagement process on this particular bill in the next 11 days, because I don't think it'll, it'll get the kind of feedback that people want. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. So I, I do think we have time. We heard from the administration that we have time. We heard from the administration that we can do it. We have had legislative agenda process over the last several years that was not my process. And we have a new lobbyist this year that is suggesting that we do things a little bit differently, and I think that's great. And so we do have a new process, and I think it's the perfect time to expand that process. I did not realize that we had been working on this since June, and so it feels, it doesn't feel right to me that we come a week before, a week ago, and it feels very rushed, you know, that we had to get this through. I don't recall us having, feeling rushed the years before, but this year, we've changed our process, I think for good reasons, so that we can try to get into the governor's budget rather, as it's proposed, rather than trying to get legislators to put it in, to add it to the budget. I, I really would be hard-pressed to understand why there would be an opposition to more public engagement. I think it's a great opportunity that we have now to engage the community on what our legislative priorities are, as proposed, get feedback from the community, and as Councilmember Hunt talked about, education, I think is not really the best word, but to have dialogue with our community about what those projects are and why they're on the legislative agenda, and maybe also be educated from the public, our community, about other ideas that they might have for a legislative agenda. The PFOS issue, I don't see as a, as a problem. I think it's, and I don't know that it has to be treated differently. I think the council could just, I mean, I think it's extraordinarily, extraordinarily unlikely that this council would ever do anything in the next couple of weeks to take that off the agenda, nor do I think that the public would engage with us and say, "No, we need to take that off the agenda." I think that's a red herring, and I think we could easily continue to have conversations with the governor's office and different agencies about, "Yeah, we expect this to be on the legislative agenda." I just don't think that that's, I don't think that that's a threat, that's going to be somehow removed. I don't think it has to be treated differently and can be left on-- I don't think it has to be treated differently and can be left on for public engagement purposes, and then the public knows that we are seeking money from the state to continue to work on an issue that we've been talking about in the community for a couple of years that's been really, really important. I fully support taking the extra time to engage with the public, even though it is only a couple of weeks. And next year, what we should do is learn from this and start this process earlier, engage the council earlier, and engage the public earlier. But I do support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Batiste, is that a finger in the air? You want to talk?
Yeah.
Okay. Council, Deputy Council President Batiste.
Thank you. So I'm, at this point, I'm just going to make a couple of comments. I would echo a couple of things that my fellow council members have talked about. Councilmember Goodman just spoke about next year, and I think that's really important. We have a new lobbyist. We're looking to do things earlier than we had been doing them in the past, so I think that we're going to give, need to revise this process. And so it makes all the sense in the world to me to look at that for next year. I'm not exactly sure how I feel about it for this year and would echo some of the concerns that Council President Martz talked about in terms of we have a very short time period. This has been the process in the past. We have a very short time period in which to gather any public engagement, and it seems like it's just sort of coming at the final hour. I think I might have heard things differently than some of my fellow council members about the PFAS issue, and I do have a concern with not just putting that forward initially. So I'm not positive how I feel about breaking these items apart, but I do have a concern regarding that, and also have a concern regarding the fact that we really are getting into this point where we need to be budget-focused. Have a lot of work coming down the road in terms of that. So I'm just going to leave it there for now and continue to think for a few moments.
Thank you. We have a couple more council members to hear from, too. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Mayor, could you read the motion again, please?
Direct the administration to engage the public on the legislative agenda, AB 7665, before October 1st, 2018, and refer AB 7665 to a Special Services and Safety Committee meeting on September 25th, returning to the full council on October 1st, 2018, for action.
Okay, thank you. Today is the 17th? I was listening carefully to the comments. Vicky made some comments about context and depth, background, and I think those are valid comments. As I thought about that, what unfolded in my mind was, okay, that sounds like a three-month process to really make it value-added and actually make a valuable contribution to this effort. Today's the 17th, engage before the 1st, action on the 1st. I don't think that this motion with these timeframes will, are going to work. The kind of engagement I hear being asked for, the opportunity for there to be some material change or contributions to this, to get that out of that process in this timeframe, I don't think is very likely. This is kind of a, yeah, check the box, we did some more engagement. I know the effort is serious, but it needs a lot more time than this. So I'm going to not support this motion, and because engagement is important, we cannot, and the public cannot be successful in this timeframe as proposed.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd really like to say I like what we're doing this year with the legislative agenda a whole lot better than previously, so thank you for that. Not just the whole structure of it and the timing of it is just a real good improvement. Adding to that, I think I say next year, we need to add into the public comment section of it so we can get more input on that as well. So that's kind of an overall thing. I'm having trouble with this one, too, because I always am one for more public comment than less, but at the same time, we haven't received it yet too much. And an 11-day period is just, I'm not sure what we can do in 11 days, you know, to get that all back and around. It's just, it's really, I'm not sure what we can really do to make it effective, and that's my concern in doing a lot of work to get that. I appreciate you, you said you put some work into that a little bit because you heard that, so there's been some attempt at engagement, and I know I got one email on it. And so there's definitely some concern out there, but we haven't heard much other public comment at any of these couple meetings. So I'm really torn because that's why I'd like to hear a little more public comment, but I'm just not sure that the time period allows really viable public comment that would add significantly to changing this. But thanks for the work. I really like what we're doing this year, for sure.
Thank you. We have gone around once with comments, and if somebody would like to come back on the second round before we take a vote? Councilmember Goodman?
Yes. Do you have the list of the criteria for a successful legislative agenda on your, in your slides?
See if I can pull that back up.
Are you looking for the slide from last week?
Yes.
It's in the folder.
Okay. Oh, no, it was work session.
Part of the council and community.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to make final comments before I call for the vote? Deputy Council President Batiste, followed by Councilmember Ray.
So I would just like to reiterate that I completely support that we want to have as much public engagement as we can going forward, and I think because of, I really feel like because of really the shift in the timeline is a little bit about why we're sort of landing where we are right now. And so I just really want to make sure that when we go forward with this in the future, regardless of what the vote is tonight, that we have the opportunity to wrap that into the timeline so we're really getting out and being able to talk with the community about all of these issues before it comes down to such a short timeframe as we're in right now. I still do have a concern that the 11-day window is not adequate time to really go forward and get everything that we really need to in, for the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray, thank you.
So, Councilmember Goodman, thank you for putting that up. So I'm just going to go down the list. So by annual agenda, check. Focused on two to three top priorities, check. Correlate to city goals, check. Consistency, build on previous success, I think a check. I don't know enough to say. Full support of the council and community, maybe a check minus. If, under your request, one priority per budget, operating capital transportation. So really, as you look at the success criteria that our consultants have laid out for us, we've done pretty good, but where we have failed or fallen short, I won't use the word fail, that's too strong, fallen short is around community engagement and getting support from the community for this agenda. So I am very cognizant of the time constraints, and that is the reason for trying to move this as quickly as possible. That being said, I think some public input and making a concerted effort to get that community input, which is something more than sending an email to 300 people because that's what, 0.1% of the population of the city. So we've got to do something different. We've got to find a different way to engage the community because this is a topic that if it showed up in most people's email, which is what it did, I don't think it would necessarily spur their interest. And yet I know that this is something that is very important to people in this community. So recognize the short timeframe, recognize that we don't have a lot of time to do this, recognize that we need to do it better next year, but I firmly believe that we need to make a concerted effort to engage with the community and ask them what they think our priorities should be. And we might be right, but we might be wrong.
So here's what I'm seeing. I have Councilmember Hunt, Councilmember Ramos, and Council President Martz. Not hearing a lot of people changing other people's minds, so let's have a last round of comments. I think you are the last three, maybe, that haven't had a second chance, so Hunt, Ramos, and Council President Martz.
All right. Question. It's my understanding, well, there was a number of questions about how much can actually be accomplished in terms of public engagement in the timeframe that's proposed. My understanding is we would be able to have a town hall or some sort of open forum for a discussion. Is that correct?
I think what I would recommend at this point, given that these folks are part-time, not here every day of the week, and if you were to move forward with the Special Services and Safety meeting on the 25th, is just to couple that meeting with a public engagement opportunity prior to the meeting. And so we would just post, I want to be clear because I was clear last time about what we were going to do for public engagement. Yes, I was. I said, "It's going to look like we will post a news item on the website. We will put an email address on that news item," and that's what we would plan to do. And we didn't receive feedback at that point in time as to whether or not that was not enough or... So this time, I want to be clear again that we would intend to do a public notice for an open house opportunity where we would go through the priorities as the management analysts have done tonight, and we would help facilitate that, answering questions. Pose the big question, which Councilmember Ray posed, which I think was along the lines of, are these the right priorities for the city to ask for funding on? Lead with that. Try to provide some of the background that you were suggesting about the context so that people can understand, because I'm sure average residents would come and say, "You need to just be asking for transportation," let's say, and then we can provide some context." So that's what we would do. Notice the public meeting, push some social media to make sure that notice gets out into the community. That's what I would recommend doing. If there's desires to do something, I think you used the phrase "more creative," then we would need to talk about our ability to pull that off, given the time constraints and the part-time nature of the folks doing this work.
And I just have a quick thing. In terms of this, I had a conversation with Director Fujimoto about the city strategic plan, and I think the city strategic plan is being in development as well, and I see this as an opportunity to talk about how our legislative agenda, our policy, and our strategic plan as a city all align, and how we can best represent the community in all of those facets. And so I see this as an opportunity for engagement on that as well.
Sure. And I just want to add something because David just made me aware that the TOD open house is also that same evening as the 25th, so just want to make sure I all understood that because we haven't done that work. Usually, we look at our calendar and try to find out where we have conflicts and try to avoid those, so just be aware of that. But yes, we always try to take advantage of opportunities to then talk about bigger and different things as well.
I have Councilmember Ramos, followed by Council President Martz.
So basically, I had the same question. What exactly would we be doing? So just to reiterate again, is basically trying to get the word out that, you know, in a week from now, there'll be a meeting that's going to be conflicting with the TOD meeting at the same time, and that's going to be, where is that located? Yeah.
We believe it's at Tivitz Creek Manor. I can look it up in just a second.
So that would be at the same time, and that currently is one of our listed top priorities, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So the time to get that word out and the time for people to react and be able to show up for that one night, I mean, but that's all we've got. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yes. Council President Martz.
So as to this point about full support of the council and community, I'm at peace that we have support of the community on this agenda. It went out, the September 4th agenda went out, was posted August 31st. I am confident that if that agenda had said that we want to see CHEL sites on the east side, I am confident that many, many members of the community would have come before us at the council, at the 4th, at the work session, and at tonight's meeting to let us know that they think that would be a bad idea. I think the fact that we've only had one citizen feedback on this agenda is because it has not raised a lot of interest in the community. So I take transparency seriously. I've said it before, I'll say it again. I was the one who pushed hard to get budget meetings on camera and get committee meetings on camera. I take it very, very seriously, and I think we've done due process on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've had a couple of rounds of comments. Just looking around to see if somebody is absolutely dying to say one more thing to provide context or information. If not, I'm going to call for the vote, and I'll read the motion again. Motion is, "Direct the administration to engage the public on the legislative agenda, AB 7665, before October 1st, 2018, and refer Agenda Bill 7665 to a Special Services and Safety Committee meeting on September 25th, returning to the full council on October 1st, 2018, for action." All those in favor, raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion fails? Do you need me to read the names, or did you catch? You caught it? Okay. Is there another motion? Council President Martz.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the 2019-2021 legislative agenda as presented.
Second. Don't you find my proper place? It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2019-2021 legislative agenda as presented. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Goodman?
Yes, I'm not going to support the motion. We have a list of criteria that was created, and it doesn't meet the list of criteria. I'm very disappointed to hear several council members say, "I support public comment, engagement, transparency, and all of that, but I don't think those, I don't think those two go together." I'm disappointed that we couldn't at least try to have a more concerted effort or any concerted effort to actually engage the public beyond our work session and business meeting. So for those reasons, I will not be supporting it.
Anybody else like to speak to the motion? Seeing no other hands, I'll call for, oh, seeing Councilmember Hunt.
So I am concerned about the policy manual and that I think there are so many different things in the policy manual that are currently of different priorities but are not ordered as such. I want, I would like to, is there a possibility for the work in terms of ordering those by the city administration so that they would be prioritized within the different, within the different topics, categories?
And just for clarification, are you looking for kind of rank order within each policy area?
So my question is really related to how it will be used. My understanding is that if there was an opportunity for additional asks, that it would be based on the category. There would be something about transportation, then you would look at the policy manual, and you would look at the first one, I would think. You would look at the first one in the policy manual and then go forward and say, "This is what the city of Issaquah feels as our first priority under that category." So categorizing by topic then makes sense, but then having them not be categorized by importance seems potentially problematic, especially if it's time-sensitive. Did I get, did I understand your earlier statement about how it would be? Did I get, did I understand your earlier statement about how it would be used correctly?
Yes, I think you did. And tell me if I have answered your question. We have not contemplated going through the document and trying to put them in priority order. However, we did have one conversation about wanting to make sure that Route 18 was right there, front and center. And so we purposely put that at the top of the transportation bulleted list. But we did not contemplate the other bullet points and other sections in the same way. So if we got an ask, and that ask was, we have funds available for human service-oriented pieces, we would turn to the policy manual, and we would look at where we might have alignment with that call for additional projects. And if we had a few that would fit, then we might, if we had time, we might bring that back for your guidance. If we did not have time, we would likely have a conversation at council leadership to decide if we wanted to submit and which item we would pick.
That's more interesting.
Just, I'm curious. Why isn't our lobbyist here this evening?
Because in past years, it wasn't needed.
Okay. Okay. So in past, we've never had our lobbyist here at the evening of, at the business meeting? Okay. Understood. It is unfortunate. I think there's been maybe some questions tonight that could have been helpful for, I certainly look at an agenda and the question about prioritizing and ordering, and I think I know how this is used. I don't believe it's a document that's given to legislators or presented to them and read to them, and there's this implied kind of preference for Issaquah for these and less preference for others. I think what they do is they become talking points when issues rise up, there's a committee meeting, a topic is there, our lobbyist knows that what's going on, maybe knows some committee members, and communication can go out, a word of support. It's a play sheet that allows, whether it be city staff, council members, our lobbyists, other members who are aware of this, that can lend a voice, however, in support or against a topic, when it arises and when there's an opportunity. There may be some staff members for various legislators that maybe spend a little bit more time on that to know where Issaquah is coming from. But I could be wrong with that, too. But it would be helpful to maybe know a little bit more, but that's how I imagine how this is used. And as such, in years past, I haven't felt that a priority order, which I think would be very difficult for us to attain anyway, it's one of the, in years past, that's why we haven't had a priority order. About the content, it's very interesting about the lack of comments tonight about the content in itself. I think it's good, I'm really glad to see Highway 18 there up front top. I mean, you know, it's transportation, and if there's one thing, and we want to have one subtle message about a list somewhere, okay, put Highway 18 out there. But I know that there is no specific bills in place right now beyond what we already know about, and so there's no reason to go, for us to go beyond. We're not going to initiate legislation by legislative agenda from here in Issaquah. But I do like the, I do like the agenda that's here. I do like the way it is stated. I think it's all very clear. I think it is a very usable document by anybody who wants to use it. And so it's been a good job. I appreciate the effort that's gone into this. And I will repeat what I said earlier. I think getting more engagement would be great, but we have to create an opportunity for that to be successful for everybody who participates in it. And I think that's a future consideration. So thank you. I'm going to support the motion.
I'm kind of losing place. Is there another hand in the air? Deputy Counsel Batiste.
So I'll be supporting this motion this evening. As we've, first of all, thank you for all of the work that has gone into this. I think that we're learning a lot as we're going forward and being able to sometimes get in, out in front of that we, you know, we're engaging with a new lobbyist, we've decided to push things up on the timeline, and that has resulted, I think, in where we ended up this evening. So hopefully, we're taking all of these pieces and learning from them, and that we can go forward next year and have additional engagement with the community and the ability to talk through some of the issues, including what Councilmember Hunt just spoke about in terms of, would we like to put those in order of priority and get more firm understanding? But I'd like to see us go forward and understand from the council up front what we want to do to get to that point in time where we're ready to go forward and talk about what our three top agenda items are before the governor's budget. I am a firm supporter in community engagement, and I always want to see that go forward. I did have a concern tonight in regard to the PFAS, PFAS, and the partnerships that we talked about, and being able to present that and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos?
Yes, I just want to make a comment, too, on the public input side, as a, someone who does support that regardless of what other people say. But public engagement must be in a way in which it works for the public as well as trying to get good input. The data has to come back in a way that it's usable in a timeframe, and the public engaged in a way that's respectful. And there's just a whole lot of things go with that, and I've never seen any kind of public engagement of value in a short time period. It tends to be a longer time getting folks engaged, getting their input, and putting it into an assembly of what, how you can take that and add that to what we already have. So I think that timing and the quality of how that would come out is definitely a critical piece. And yeah, I don't like, like me, said that, not a supporter of public transparency because I feel I am.
Councilmember Ray.
So I really hate to do this because I haven't, haven't vetted it with anyone, but I'm going to be a little extemporaneous. I was hopeful that we would have more time to listen to the public, factor that in, and then confirm the legislative agenda. But I would like to make an amendment to the legislative agenda as currently proffered, and that is, I'd like to add a item that is to pursue the acquisition of open space within the city of Issaquah. And the reason I want to do that is because I have heard a lot of public comment that says this is something that's very important to us.
Your motion is to propose to amend the legislative agenda to add a fourth, what, a fourth?
Priority.
Priority.
Which addresses the acquisition of open space within the city of Issaquah.
Being the priority, not the policy.
Whatever this first chunk is.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it has been moved to propose an amendment to the legislative agenda to add a fourth priority, which is addresses the acquisition of open space in the city of Issaquah. And I'm not sure if it's appropriate, but I would like to maybe provide you an option while you're considering this, which is, our lobbyists have advised us that more than one capital S can mean you're competing against yourself. There is the potential to amend a legislative agenda. You have a goal statement at the end that talks about, gives a look ahead or a peek ahead about what the city of Issaquah might be coming with in the future, and it could read something, have to look here. But it's not a specific ounce for dollars at this time, but a heads up to the legislators, to the governor, to the senators, that this is a priority for Issaquah that they may see in the future, future laws. I just put that information out there, and now I'll leave it out for you for comments. President Martz.
So I'm going to oppose this amendment because, for a couple of reasons. One is that I don't believe currently the major land allocation question that's in front of us involves any expected state contributions. I believe the partner contributions are expected to be at the county level and some of the other organizations. So I look at this front page, and I see very specific projects that state legislators can say, yes, by golly, I can help the residents of Issaquah do this or do that. I am really loathe to, to put something on there that we don't know, first of all, we're not expecting state contributions to it. The second issue is that it is still an open discussion slash negotiation, right? And I want to be careful about telegraphing any changes, you know, those landowners have, are considering their options in front of them, including private development. And so I want to be very careful what we do in the midst of those discussions that we've been having with them. And then the third is this issue around muddying the waters with multiple capital asks. You know, I'd rather be, I'd rather be strong in one thing than medium in two or more things.
Thank you. Before I go back to Councilmember Ray, let me go around the table a little bit. Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. Thank you. Let me ask the maker of the motion, do you intend this to be used, this is an ask for anything, something specific?
No, I think that, thank you for asking that. I think that open space acquisition within the city is a priority of the city, and I had nothing particular in mind for what that acquisition would be. But I think that if we could procure additional state funding to support acquisitions, it would give us more latitude and flexibility to maintain some of the things that make this a charming place to live.
And you are proposing it goes where, in, how into this document?
It would be number four.
Number four?
It would come after Transit Oriented Development and Opportunity Center. And I recognize that this blows the notion of three, and I know that it blows two capital projects. What I'm reacting to is, I know from public comment on a number of things, that open space acquisition is a priority for the city and the people who live here. And like I said, I didn't intend to make this motion until we did not pass the last motion, but I think since we're moving forward, this is my opportunity to suggest maybe we look a little broader at what we know our other public needs, requests, desires. Sorry.
Thank you for that answer. It wasn't clear to me before. That was very helpful to know what the intent of the motion is. It's my, where, I think your heart's in the right place. Who would disagree that we want to preserve and expand the amount of open space, both within the city around and to restore those lands? That's been very important to us, has been for a long time. As proposed, and as you just described, I don't think that that fits within the legislative agenda. It's not a specific ask, and there's no money, there's no legislative action or action that we've already taken that it's tied to. So I don't think it, at this, as proposed, it fits within this agenda in front of us. So I'm not going to support it.
Councilmember Ramos, followed by Councilmember Hunt.
Could I address this a little further?
Yes.
And just see if, seeing those things, and I seconded this, and so I want the discussion, but would it be better placed under Environment and Natural Resources as the number one statement under there, considering that's the way it worded, the way it's worded, it kind of follows into that area, and be the number one priority listed under that? Something to think about. Look at that, I would, I would be willing to work as your second on that as well.
More discussion? Sorry, Councilmember Hunt, you had your hand up.
I, I think that the, I would argue that I think the motion is too, as worded, is perhaps specific and limiting. I think that we, especially if we think about this in terms of a goal statement, which may be one possible way to include it in the legislative agenda, as a goal statement, I think that one priority of the community that is not strongly reflected in the document as it stands is our environmental stewardship ethic. It has been, it has been, I think, more strongly communicated by previous legislative agendas that have emphasized the community's strong desire for parks, strong desire for that community space, and the community use of parks, and the importance of the natural environment to Issaquah. I think that in the current, in the current legislative agenda, the part of the agenda that's about the environment is about PFAS, which is not, does not have that same sort of use of the environments, that kind of importance for our community, that they want to go out and have hike and have natural spaces and have parks and have that, that relationship with the environment. So I think that the struggle to have this reflect our community's values, I completely see that. I think that potentially as a goal statement, this could be worded to have something, I've been kind of struggling to find appropriate wording, but something to the effect of that the city, that the city as one of its goals and in future legislative agendas likely would have, likely does aspire to have acquisition of land for community use for parks, open space, and also for operation and improvements and expansion of services provided by parks and open space. And so I think that there is an opportunity to make this reflect the community values, and I, so I think there's been a couple of suggestions. I mean, I also felt that the environmental section of this policy document was very, in my opinion, limited, and so it could be strengthened there as well.
Any more comments on the motion, which is to propose to amend the legislative agenda to add a fourth priority, which addresses the acquisition of open space in the city of Issaquah?
Can I, can I make an amendment? Propose an amendment?
Propose, I think what would be cleanest is if people would like to discuss the motion on the table, I would say, let's do that and have a vote, and if it fails, you're more than welcome to propose another amendment. Discussion on the motion from Councilmember Ray, propose to amend the legislative agenda to add a fourth priority, and I think Deputy Counsel President Batiste had her hand up.
So thank you for that, Chris. I, I agree. We have heard, oh, sorry, so much public comment about open space and in looking and actually listening to Councilmember Hunt, and also hearing the recommendation from the mayor, just thinking more about how we can incorporate that, this piece into the legislative agenda. I would, I'm still thinking about what you're talking about, Chris, but I think the goal statement and adding it to our environmental section or strengthening that is something that I would be supportive of. We, this is a little bit difficult in that we just talked about trying to go forward and getting more information and having more of an opportunity to talk. Some of the council talking about, we didn't feel like we had sufficient time, and now we have something else coming forward and trying to sort of decide that right now. So I'm still thinking a little bit, but I am thinking very much about the comments that Councilmember Hunt has made in terms of a goal statement and then strengthening the language under the the language under the environmental section.
Any other discussion about the amendment? Councilmember Winterstein?
I'm struggling to hear a legislative, a true, a tone in words and statements that fit within the legislative agenda template or framework. It seems to me I'm hearing a lot of comments that sound like elements of our strategic plan and our mission and our guiding principles and our priority areas and goals and objectives, bleeding over into, let's how get that reflected in our legislative agenda. And if there were specific issues, policy-related or potential funding-related projects that we're aware of, that that could be reflected on, then that would make sense. But I'm hearing this as a proposal to get somehow our priorities that come from our vision somehow reflected as a statement in our legislative agenda. I agree our priorities should influence what's there, but this isn't doing that.
Any other discussion on the proposed amendment? Councilmember Ray?
I'd like to withdraw the motion.
If your second agrees.
I'm okay.
Motion has been withdrawn? Second agrees?
If there's no objection.
Amendment, text amendment?
If there's no objection.
No objection? Would anyone care to make, propose a different amendment?
I'd like to make a motion to add a goal statement to the policy. So I think as a goal statement, it can have a couple sentences. So I'm going to propose.
Councilmember Hunt?
Sentences, yeah.
This is just a suggestion. If you'd like to take a five-minute recess, we can talk.
Sure.
While, yeah.
I have this and I have mine.
Okay. Take a five-minute recess.
Thanks.
Thanks. [laughter]
Councilmember Hunt, do you have a proposed amendment?
I do. I would like to add a policy statement to the legislative agenda in the policy manual under the category of environment and natural resources that as the first bullet states, "The City of Issaquah will pursue opportunities to grow and enhance the city's open spaces through partnership, acquisitions, and/or policy changes."
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Deputy Council President Batiste.
I'm sorry, could you just read that? Oh, I'm sorry.[187.20][187.20](laughter) Thank you.
It is up on the screen. Any discussion? Not yet? Okay, still reading, still digesting. That's the President Maritz, followed by Councilmember Hunt.
I will be supporting this amendment. I think that the public has stated in basically every time we ask them where our priorities are broadly as a city, acquiring open spaces is a perennial strong point, so I'm glad that this would be a welcome addition, I think, to our agenda.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hunt, hand your hand up.
I think that the city has expressed interest in this, so we will be able to better align some of our policy manual with the community's interests by passing this. And I also think that in previous years, we have had many asks having to do with specific park projects, such as in the last legislative agenda, I believe it was Confluence and Lake Smamish State Park, and then also additional parks previously. So part of that history and the context is that often, typically, the city is looking in their legislative agenda to have funding for parks and for open space and for the community values that benefits. So I will be supporting this, and I think that it puts us in a better position in terms of aligning with the community's values in our policy manual.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos.
Yes, this is what I think was missing is an environmental piece, and I think we've got it in the right place now where we can maneuver this as need be and as opportunities arise, so I definitely will be supporting this. This is a top priority for me, and I think we finally got it in here, and that's good. I'm very happy.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Batiste.
So I'll be supporting this this evening, and thank you to Councilmember Ray and Councilmember Hunt for their work in this area. And this is incredibly important. It's something that we've definitely heard so much from the community, and we really did have need to draw that out, and I think that it now is in the appropriate place in terms of a goal statement that is something that we would like to pursue.
Thank you. Other comments? Let's remember Ray.
I think this is brilliant.[354.71][354.71](laughter) I really do. I mean, we needed to get this in here, and my intent with the original amendment was to elevate this, and thank you, everyone, for the discussion about how to refine that and make this better, and I think this captures it brilliantly.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Winterstein.
Just a question about the wording. I look at the structure and kind of the current, how this would fit in. Everything tends to align with supporting generally, say, monitoring legislation or supporting efforts, and there may even be supporting legislation and then name a specific program. So for the intended audience being legislators in Olympia, this doesn't have the support or monitor or oppose type language in it. So I'm asking just kind of an open-ended question, is like, how does this language, how will this language be used by its intended audience to ask, for them to weigh as they consider potential different legislation or policy? Is it, is it really, it just says, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna pursue opportunities to grow and enhance through partnership. We, are we suggesting we're gonna partner with the state? Is this, we're gonna partner with you or your departments or the legislature or specific legislation? What? I want, this is the first time I'm considering this, and I just don't see language up there yet that will, if we just want a token statement about this, it does that for a legislative agenda to actually be something meaningful for its intended audience? I don't think that language is as good as it could be, but I don't have an alternative. I'm kind of putting it out there.
Thanks. Are there any other comments or questions? Are we ready for the vote? Looks like we might be ready for the vote. All those in favor of the amendment to add a policy statement to the legislative agenda in the policy manual under the category of environment and natural resources that as the first bullet states, "The City of Issaquah will pursue opportunities to grow and/or enhance the city's open spaces through partnership, acquisitions, and/or policy changes." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The amendment carries unanimously. Back to the main motion, which I can reread if you'd like me to. Main motion is to approve the 2019-2021 legislative agenda as amended now, I would guess. Patricia? As amended. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the 2019-2021 legislative agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries five to two with Councilmember Ray and Councilmember Goodman opposed. And I know it's highly unusual, but I would just like to add a few comments that I recognize when we change processes, how difficult it is to make sure that we can accommodate everybody's interest and desire to weigh in on the process and the changes. I think we made very good steps this year, but I can see through this conversation tonight that this was tough, and I appreciate all your hard work. And I also wanted to thank the city administrator and our policy analyst team for procuring our new lobbyist team after our former lobbyist retired and working on this new format with them. I think this is really well done, and I appreciate all the effort. I did hear that in future processes, you'd like to talk about earlier or different types of public touches, whether or not the council would like to consider prioritizing these policies in the policy manual, and I think that was it. But I wanted to thank you for your really, really hard work on this night, because I know this was tough. Thank you very much. Now going to move to good of the order, and I believe Council President has an item for us.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. So four three votes are very tough, but I want to, I want to commit that my comments about developing a comprehensive community engagement policy were not said in the heat of the moment, but rather because I do, this is a recurring issue that we as a council have challenged ourselves and challenged administration in terms of getting a consistency as to what engagement we want on what issues. And so I would welcome any feedback in the next couple of weeks from people. We are heading into budget season, but I sort of want to pledge to you as Council President that I'm not going to let this issue die on the vine, and that I really want to work with the other six of you on coming up with an engagement policy that all of us can agree on. Thanks.
Any else for good of the order? I have a couple items to share with you. I just wanted to do a bit of a look ahead at the September 24 council work session. The agenda items include central Issaquah zoning for the old Route 10 and intensive commercial areas around I-90, and also looking at some citywide strategic planning draft information that the staff teams have been working on. And at October 1, on our regular city council meeting, the tentative agenda items includes the proposed 2019 budget brief and schedule and the Visit Issaquah Destination Marketing Organization bylaw. I'm just going to go back and check on that. Is the administrator, proposed 2019 budget brief and schedule? I think that's what's on the...
Yeah, that's our intended plan at the moment.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, I just wanted to remind those in leadership this week on Wednesday that I believe we're meeting at the Lewis House, another tour of another parks meeting room, and that is the Park Staff Office and Meeting Room that is south of Andrews. It's not the Trail Center, it's the other small house. That's where our leadership meeting will be this week. Executive session is the next thing on our agenda. As earlier announced, there'll be an executive session held this evening to discuss pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110, per N1, per NI. This item is expected to take approximately 10 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow an open session. We will now recess into executive session at 9:55. We will now recess into executive session at 9:55. We are back in open session at 10:17 PM. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to move the authorized the city attorney to commence litigation against American Tower as discussed in executive session.
Second. Second. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the city attorney to commence litigation against American Tower as discussed in executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously. And there being no further business, our meeting is adjourned at 10:18.